... open public meetings. Close of this meeting was immediately advertised by Hurstville for the South American Times as well as Postphone Call and Call for the Disclosures. Flyers are located to the double doors to your left and to your right. Please sign us all over the benches. This meeting is being videoed. Anyone who does not wish to be seen on television may be excused. This will be shown on Channel 9 every week, Sunday at 9:00 p.m., Wednesday at 7:00 p.m., Friday at 10:00 p.m., and Saturday at 10:00 p.m., and will continue until next week. This meeting is also being live through YouTube, but you can view it at the website of this meeting in general. Now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve.
Councilman Bennett?
Here.
Council Vice President Brown?
Here.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Yerkes?
Present.
President DeBorello?
Here.
Mayor Delapia?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Rooney?
Present.
Moving on, presentations. Tonight we have a community caretaking award presented to Thomas Zippler by Chief Gersick. Chief, you want to stand?
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to present the 2025 Community Caretaker Award to a truly outstanding Washington Township resident, Tommy Zippler. Tommy's generosity and commitment to our community embodies the very spirit of this award. Year after year, he fills shopping carts full of food for our annual Police Department Thanksgiving Food Drive, ensuring that families in need have a warm meal during the holiday season. His kindness doesn't stop there. He owes incredible contributions to our stuffy cruiser toy event. He has donated carts full of bicycles and toys, bringing joy to children who might otherwise go without at Christmas time. Beyond that, Tommy's $5,000 donation last year to our community caretaker and outreach programs will directly impact countless lives, strengthening the bond between our department and the people we serve. Tonight, Tommy also presented me with another $5,000 donation for our Washington Township Police K-9 unit. Tommy, on behalf of the Washington Township Police Department, our community, the mayor and council, thank you for your unwavering generosity and for making a real difference in our community. Thank you. (applause)
Congratulations. Congratulations. You look pretty tonight.
Thanks for loving the line with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I get a closer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on, now, the holders. I have a motion to approve the holders for March 12, 2025.
Motion. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorello?
Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular minutes for February 26, 2025? Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorello?
Resolutions. The following resolutions are by consent agenda and only require a vote for all listed. Each one must be read by title. If any member of council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to indicate it prior to the reading of the titles. Does anybody have or wish any of the resolutions to be removed or read separately? Can I get a motion to approve Resolution... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Clark, would you read them, please?
Resolution 83, 2025. Resolution authorizing the township of Washington to solicit bids for property maintenance services for the year 2025. 84. Resolution authorizing the sale of surplus township property no longer needed for public use through gov.deals.com public online auction. 85. Resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriation of funds. Resolution 86. Resolution authorizing refund of taxes and obligations.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolutions 83, 25 to 86, 25? Motion. Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorello?
Resolutions. The following resolutions are by consent agenda and only require a vote for all listed. Each one must be read by title. If any member of council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to indicate it prior to the reading of the titles. Does anybody have or wish any of the resolutions to be removed or read separately? Can I get a motion to approve Resolution... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Clark, would you read them, please?
Resolution 83, 2025. Resolution authorizing the township of Washington to solicit bids for property maintenance services for the year 2025. 84. Resolution authorizing the sale of surplus township property no longer needed for public use through gov.deals.com public online auction. 85. Resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriation of funds. Resolution 86. Resolution authorizing refund of taxes and obligations.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolutions 83, 25 to 86, 25? Motion. Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorello?
Okay, moving on to old business, new business, and reports. Start with Councilman Bennett.
All right, a couple of things. I'd like to thank the Boy Scouts, Troop 123, for helping out at the Ray Bees Clinic. It's a great event that helps us get cats and dogs vaccinated, but it's one of the Boy Scouts' favorite little activities that I can give them the help on from that. Coming up next month is the annual Car Show for the Old Stone House Historical Preservation. That'll be the last Saturday in April, which is April 26, from 10 to 2. Like, the town people to come out. We're going to have about 200 cars, vendors, music, fun activities, so do come out. Couple of things that are happening at the school. Coming up this weekend is Shrek Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at the high school. Like us to, you know, get out and see the talent of Washington Township High School. Also, the following weekend, we have at Bunker Hill, we have Legally Blonde musical, and that'll be from the 20th to the 22nd. And then at Orchard Valley, on the 20th to the 22nd, they have Beetlejuice. So these are, you know, shows that you and your family and kids can get out to, so make sure you take advantage of that. Also, just to let you know that it's getting nicer out, we have to be aware of kids on bikes, kids walking at playgrounds. Make sure that, as I always say, slow down, okay? Do the speed limit, and, you know, the police are out there, and we don't want people speeding in our town. And that's it for me.
Councilman Harris?
Well, I've been fortunate enough for the better part of the last two weeks to be on vacation down in Florida, so I missed a lot of the events going on in town. So, Rich, thanks for filling us in on things that have been happening and things that are upcoming. I just want to send a thank you out to Tom Zippler, who was just acknowledged tonight. I think it's great that people in town dedicate their time, their money, their efforts, their energy to other people within the town. I think it's inspiring, and I'd like to see a lot more of that and do some more of that myself. So that's all I have for this week.
Councilman Yerkes?
Thank you. Wanted to give a shout out to Lori Morrell. She helped host our annual Veterans Event here in the council room on, what was it, March 6, 6 o'clock. Veterans from Washington Township who have served, their plaques, once the information is submitted to her, we honor them by placing them on the wall. For those of you out there who haven't seen it yet, please do yourself a favor. Either come to a council meeting or come to when this building is open, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, and take a look at all the veterans who proudly serve this community. And I wanted to give another shout out to the honoree that night, over to veteran Salvador Masser. He was a sergeant U.S. Army from 1943 to 1946, still up and running, and he is over 100 years old, Lori. Over 100 years old. So it was an honor to meet with him, and a very, very nice event, very well attended. And I want to thank all our veterans out there who continue to serve and all those who have served. We greatly appreciate your service. Thank you very much. That's all.
Solicitor Rooney?
Thank you, sir. Very little to report, which is, I lamely joke every time we're here for a council meeting is usually a good thing coming from the township attorney. Remained very busy, but mostly on good stuff. Plenty of potential development and redevelopment that we've been working on with the administration and with our planner, and we'll continue to do so. Very happy for the nicer weather. Hope everyone enjoys the balance of their week.
E.A. Russo? And Mayor Delapia?
Thank you, Council Vice President Brown. I wanted to comment, a couple Saturdays ago, the Ray Bees Clinic was a great success. Thank you to Barb, Chrissy, and Adele for putting that together and running it. It was a great event. The same day, I went to the PTO craft show at the high school, which was a great event. I believe they do one in the spring, one in the fall, so if you get a chance to attend our next one, it's always a good thing to get there. Seven Brew Coffee had their building delivered on Saturday morning. Me and Council President DeBorello were there. It was pretty cool, came in the back of a truck, they craned it right in place, put it together in about an hour or so. So I believe they're going to be opening at the end of April. I visited Blended Joe today. Looks like they're going to be open at the end of April also. So it'll be two new businesses opening this month. I had the pleasure of marrying somebody last Friday, was the first one, so congratulations to Nick and Nina. It was a true honor to be a part of their day, so congratulations to both of you. And lastly, I want to remind everybody, it's St. Patty's Day this week, this actually all weekend. We do have the Washington Township Saves Lives Program. It's free Uber rides for any township resident who lives in town and is at one of our local establishments in town. This program is funded by a lot of local businesses. We're going to continue to ask them to help fund this program, but it's a way to not get behind the car if you're out drinking. So you get on your Uber app, this program will help pay up to $20 for your ride home, which being local, it shouldn't be over $20. So basically, you get a free ride home from the establishment to your house, pick your car up the next day, and everybody stays safe. So make sure you use it and make sure to mention to your local businesses to help continue to support this program. Thank you. That's all I have.
I have one more thing, is that we also last week did the reading at the elementary school. So I had a chance to read at Hurtville for two kindergarten classes, and I'll tell you one thing, they really bring a smile to your face when you read, but the questions, it's priceless.
How about I tell you, I had a kindergarten ask me where my hair went.[892.13][892.13](laughter) And I'd explained to her, I said, "Well, did your mom brush your hair all morning?" She's like, "Yeah." I'm like, "Well, I didn't have to do that. Now, did I?" And she was like astonished, but yes, the questions they asked was pretty funny.
Yeah, so that was a great event by the board event for the whole town, on the elementary end.
So, from the library, they didn't forward anything to me this week, but I do get the taken happenings letter. A lot of things in March. If you have the opportunity to go to their website, take a look at what they have for the upcoming month. If you can make it out there and attend, that'd be much appreciated by the library and staff. I do believe a copy is up on the front table there. Also, thank you to Lori and her staff for putting together that event. I had the pleasure of reading the names off and had some familiar faces, people that I knew and grew up with. It was an honor to participate on that night with them. Thank you again, Lori. Did attend Pizza with a Cop with Chief Gersick and his officers on Friday night, well-attended event. Enjoy coming out and supporting our police. Other than that, just remember to... To sign up for the Everbridge app and make sure that you're alerted to the community events. The flyer is up there to use the QR code to sign up. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me. And finally, Council President Del Barillo, you're up.
All right, listen, first of all, just to thank guys, sorry I can't be here with you for things going on first, but I wanted to thank all of everyone, guys, thank so much Lori, that the event was a beautiful event, and like, Council Bennett said, reading across America was great, had such a great time. I know Mayor and I really enjoyed it, and had a great time with that. I do think Solicitor Rooney has to send a letter through Tom River. They're trying to claim that they did it first place to get a seven brew. That's not true. It's one of the records that they didn't watch, because it's lost again, is the very first lady. So I don't know if you need to see this letter out there, but just so they're... I know they're putting it out there to the stamp, but it is actually on... And it was with the mayor when they delivered that, it was awesome to see that. What a great concept. And I've had Jason send it first a couple times now, and he's got great pride. So I think there'd be a great stage to our Washington Township business family. We've got a lot of great businesses coming our way. So more, you know, coming down the line as they come up, that's all I have.
One more thing is, the SAP, the baseball softball girls want to play us on their opening day again. I think it's like the third Saturday.
Moving on, all dogs in the township are required to be registered and vaccinated. Please stop in the clerk's office to register your dogs for 2025. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Please remember, if you're out at the local establishments, to, as Mayor Delapia said, use the Township Saves Lives. It's a good program, and we want to make sure everybody gets home safe. Moving on to public participation. Please follow the public decorum posted, which has been attached to the public agenda, and limit your comments to five minutes, please. Once you've completed your comments or questions, Council President will then ask if any member of the governing body or their designee wishes to address your questions and comments. I have a motion to open up to the public. Of second. All those in favor? Meeting is now open to the public. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Rich Nardella, 125 Pinto Drive. I apologize, I'm about two months late with this, but cold weather is not good for us. January 3, I believe, the clerk, sorry, proclaimed the new mayor and new council president as well, too. January 4, less than 12 hours later, we had an event in town. A little boy named Gavin Todd, and he is a five-year-old boy who had cancer. We had an unbelievable showing for this little boy. He goes to Hurtville, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to the mayor and to President Del Barillo, and then there was somebody else there, too, and I apologize.
Councilman Brown.
Okay, you were there, too. I'm sorry. My apologies. I also wanted to say thank you very much to Chief Gersick, Officer Doherty, or Sergeant Doherty. Had about six or seven officers there logging up traffic for us in Heritage Valley to... Also, Chief Dolgas had just about every apparatus that we have in the township. Because of that, social media and traditional media was there, and because of that, an organization reached out to me, and now Gavin was into hockey, still is into hockey, and they've reached out. And I can't tell you what's going to happen in the next four weeks, but he's going to be delivered with something that has a value of about $9,900. So I'm going to keep that to myself, no surprise to him. He is going to have a lot of friends. One last thing, too, we had, we're going to have Kindness Day at Hurtville School. His principal showed up, his Girl Scouts showed up, tons of people showed up, about 150 people. It was 12 degrees, okay, that day. So I appreciate all the efforts of all the folks that did show up there, and I just wanted to come back and publicly announce that, too. Do have, for those, we do have hockey pucks here. There's some meaning to these as well, too. These pucks will be given out to his school classmates at Hurtville School on Kindness Day and do something like that. So again, thank you very much. Thank you. Please pass that on to Chief. Please pass that on to your officers and you guys. Thank you very much.
Is it scheduled today?
We haven't scheduled it just yet. Yeah, I'm working with Principal Erica to get that together. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Please give these to the... Thank you very much. Thanks, Rich. Thank you. Anybody else? Go forward. State the name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Cheryl Hannah, 6th Colonial Way in Turnersville. I think most of you know who I am. I'm back.
Can you check your mic?
Yeah. Is it on? Do I have to get closer?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do I... You want me to repeat? Cheryl Hannah, 6th Colonial Way in Turnersville.
Thank you.
Okay. So most of you are already familiar with me, but I do live in the house that's right next to the sixth hole in the golf course. And I know I've been kind of back and forth with the town, and I know there's been new administration, so I just kind of wanted to bring it up again to the folks that are on this council. February 1, I had my kitchen window broken, and it's double pane. They only broke the outside, and trying to chase and catch down and call the police to capture the person who did it was a nightmare in itself, but last night, they busted my basement window, and the golf ball is in my basement. So I've had three broken windows, hard dented, grill dented, table broken twice. I have siding coming off my house, and just wanted to see if council has any resolution or the thought of resolution for me. Genuinely, if I... What I need to do, if there's something that I need to do personally, if you have any suggestions, because it's dangerous for me to live in this situation. So if there's a resolve that you can suggest for me or something that the council can do along with the golf course, since it's owned by the township. I know we talked previously about maybe flipping the hole, moving it closer. I know the net situation, we were back and forth with that because we don't know how much and how high, and I understand all that. And I understand I bought the house with a limited amount of liability, but I didn't think to this extent it would be this bad because somebody's going to get hurt. I've been hit. My dog's almost been hit. My daughter doesn't play in the yard. I have to park my car in the garage. So I'm just pleading with the council if there's anything that we can do together to help resolve it, or is this something that I am completely on my own with?
Well, I think that you originally offered you ability to put trees up on the border of the...
Correct.
... your house, and you declined that.
Yes.
So I think if we at least got those trees up, and they were cypresses, they would have grown pretty fast, and they would have been able to block any stuff coming in. So that was a consideration that you declined.
Correct. Because of the height of the golf balls, those trees would need to grow 50 feet. Where the tee is from where the hole is, is rather a large distance. So my one side tree to my back tree is about 50 feet, so you're looking maybe about 150 feet back. That's a distance. People take out these wedges, and they hit it. It goes over the course, it actually goes across the street. It's broken my neighbor's car window. So it's hit with some force, and it's not just people being reckless, it's just some people aren't good at the game. You go to public golf course because you don't belong to a private club. And I understand all that, but I don't know what else we can do. I understand the trees. It maybe would have offered a limited amount of protection for balls that are coming straight this way, but when you're hitting with a wedge, they're going up this way. And there, I have a huge pine tree on the side of my house. They still fly through the tree. They fly through the trees that protect the road because they end up across the street. So the trees do offer a limited amount of protection, but not full protection. So I'm kind of out of... Do you understand?
No, we do understand. We sympathize.
Understand.
Unfortunately, you moved on to or near a golf course. My question to you would be, if we could or would consider doing the trees again, would, you know, would you be agreeable to that? I mean, is it just a stop measure or try to help in the beginning? Then we can also talk with, see what else might be available, but the trees may offer a little bit of protection in the interim.
So I don't know what the trees will do, though. Again, because of the force and how they're being hit, those trees are going to have to grow pretty high, pretty fast, and it'll be a limited amount of protection. And other thoughts that could possibly mitigate it if you moved the tee and the hole closer to each other, limiting the amount of space in between? There was talk about possibly flip-flopping them. My other suggestion, and I know it's probably not a popular one, is just to shut the hole down. Because quite honestly, I don't think that's going to have an impact financially if you play. And I know golf courses are usually nine holes, 18 holes. I've been doing a little bit of research, but people come... There's a limited amount of golf courses you can go to within this area that are that little bit amount of money, unless if you want to belong to, like, Scotland Run. I believe we're cheaper than Wedgewood. I don't think it would have an impact on the people that came out just to play golf. You would still make the amount of money that you would. I don't think you would see a decline in any type of financial, you know, money going over to the township. Just a thought, and I would like for the council, if, you know, anything you can do... I come as a friend. I'm trying to figure this out, too, because I want to be able to enjoy my house, my yard, without having to worry about, is my daughter going to get hit? What's going to break? I work from home, so I hear dings and I hear things, and you don't always know who... I didn't see the golf ball in my basement until about 8 o'clock last night. So if I'm not home, I'm not going to know. I have video cameras outside, but when I went to the office, you know, they only log the first name, they don't look at ID. How am I supposed to chase people? I called the police and then had to wait for the police to come, and then now I have to get a police report, I have to get the window fixed. So I haven't even gotten that window fixed, and now I got to get another one fixed. It's just tough. So I know there's bigger issues within the township, but this is one that I have to live with all the time. I can't move. I would love to move if I could, but whoever buys my house is going to inherit the same problem, so...
Let us, we can talk to the golf course and talk with the mayor's office.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Look at some other, see what other options may be available.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Any other audience participation? Come forward. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Zachary Abrams, 27, Regalane. Last June, I came in front of the council. As she said, I know there's some new council members. Basically, I'm here because of an ordinance 285-219. And last June, it's been almost a year now, I told you guys my story and my issues, basically, and I was hoping that someone would amend the ordinance. I've been in talks with...
Let us, we can talk to the golf course and talk with the mayor's office.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Look at some other, see what other options may be available.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Any other audience participation? Come forward. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Zachary Abrams, 27, Regalane. Last June, I came in front of the council. As she said, I know there's some new council members. Basically, I'm here because of an ordinance 285-219. And last June, it's been almost a year now, I told you guys my story and my issues, basically, and I was hoping that someone would amend the ordinance. I've been in talks with Peter throughout the year multiple times. He told me October, November, oh, we're changing a bunch of ordinances, this and that. This morning, I got sued by you guys, Washington Township, and was in court. Like, I don't have a lot of time to be hanging out in court, but that's where I was. And now I'm ongoing litigation, and I don't even know how, because the litigation that is brought against me from the township, basically, I'm already in litigation prior to other things. So it's kind of a conflict of interest. I did ask you guys would amend the ordinance. I still think you should amend the ordinance, and I don't think it's fair to me that me being where no one can see anything or hear anything in my property, but there's two other properties, one's in my neighborhood, 212 Pittman Downer and 340 Gantown Road, and you can see straight, clear as day from the road when you're walking, driving their main roads, that those people do have chickens, and it is on less than one acre. So if I'm going to have any kind of court cost or any kind of fines, jail time, a lien on my house, that, which is what the letter from the township said, these people should have it, too. And there's more addresses. I don't, I'm not trying to go to the zoning office and, you know, be like, oh, I'm going to tattle-tale on these people. It's not what I'm here to do. I brought to you guys every township's ordinance that surrounds Washington Township, and they all have this, no issues. Washington Township is the only one that has an issue. I presented you guys multiple facts and health benefits. I've supported and provided to my community, you know, on my dollar, to elderly people in my neighborhood. I don't know what the big deal is, but I don't want to end up with $60,000 in court costs like the lady in Elk Township's dealing with right now. But she has a HOA. We don't have an HOA. But the zoning office really is starting to seem like an HOA. And when you're turning neighbors against each other, I don't see that being good. Washington Township was started on farms. Everybody's house in here was a farm. I don't see what the problem is. I don't have any roosters, but now I'm being penalized, and I don't know what's going to happen. I got to go back to court again. So, you know, again, I know there's new, a lot of changes. I've been back and forth with Peter. He was actually supposed to call me today. He never called me. I just want this issue resolved, personally. Like, I've lived here 10 years, and I've never had any issues. So that's really all I got for you guys. The only other thing is, now, I sent Peter some pictures. I literally have been going to Sprouts Farmer's Market. That's primarily where I shop. I know everyone's like, when's it going to come to township? Because everyone's trying to get healthy and not be sick anymore. So I go there, there's no eggs. You can't get eggs. I got my one neighbor, 70 years old, she's telling me she's using chia seeds and water in her baked goods because she doesn't have eggs. So I, you know, I give them eggs. It's, it's like 22 vitamins and nutrient, vitamins and minerals, the most nutrient-dense thing on the planet. It's not taxed in the state of New Jersey because it is a necessity. So I don't know if you guys, you know, have anything to say now or any plans or whatever, but, I mean, I just think it's a little outrageous that you're going to charge me $1,000 a day fine, 90 days in jail, or put a lien on my house because I'm trying to provide food for my family? That's pasture-raised, organic, soy-free eggs, which you can't even get those really in the store.
So, sir, just a question for you. So you came up and you said that you were being sued by the township, which, which I'm not aware of, and I'd be the one that likely be aware.
Correct. I got a court summons from A.J. Morgan, the zoning office.
So, so what you're saying is you've been issued a violation that's in municipal court for violating?
Sure.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the correct thing. So obviously, the governing body can't delve into a pending court violation. That's something that prosecutor is going to decide whether they're going to prosecute, and then it's going to go before a municipal court judge. Now, if you've spoken to Council President Del Barillo about concerns you have about the ordinance, I can figure out what those concerns are. Just like any member of the public, sometimes the solicitor makes a recommendation to the governing body. Here, it sounds like, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, you have concerns about the policy that's behind this ordinance, right? Whether or not it allows you to have chickens? And I should say, I've only been solicitor since January, so I'm not aware of what it says. I'm just trying to understand exactly what your concern is.
Yeah, I mean, I'll gladly read you the ordinance. My property backs up to Lake Candle, so it's all woods. I have turkeys that literally fight, and there's blood in my backyard. I got foxes, deer, you know.
Have you been violated for having more birds than the ordinance allows? More fowl than the ordinance allows?
So, okay, so 285-219 restrictions, latest version, which I don't know when, if there's no date here. This is right off the township. It says, "No fowl or livestock may be kept on parcels of land less than one acre."
Okay.
Okay, so I have less than one acre, yes. And other addresses that I stated to you guys, they also have less than one acre.
So that's why, Ash, your concern is with the policy. You don't like policy. You don't like
Yeah, I mean, there, I got a letter that said, $90 days in jail, $1,000 a day fine or a lien on your house because I got a couple
I just wanted to zero in on what the concern was. I'll speak to the administration about it. I can speak to Council President Del Barillo about it, and ultimately, it's up to the governing body whether they want to make a change
Yeah, I just, I'm
But I can, I can, I can take a look at it, but your particular circumstances, if they're in court, obviously, it's already in court, right? So the fate of that particular violation, that's before the judge and the prosecutor.
Yeah, I understand that, but I've been literally led on by this council since last June, and I'm on record multiple times. So if you, if you want to look it up, it's there, but, you know, if, I don't understand how I would get a court summons when I'm literally being told, oh, yeah, we're going to, we're going to take a look, oh, we're going to do, you know, tell me, tell me no, tell me no, and then
As I, as I said, sir, something that a governing body can't do or a township can't do is decide when or when not it wants to enforce the rules that are on the book. So if there's a rule on the books until such time as the lawmaking body, which is the governing body or changes the rules, then the township's officers and the township's agents have to enforce those rules. So I'll take a look at the ordinance, and I'll talk to the administration, okay?
Okay.
I have a call.
Sure.
You have the ordinance front of you. When was that ordinance adopted?
So that's why, it just says latest version. There's no, there's no date. I can bring it up if you want to look at it. It's a screenshot right from the
I was absent in my tenure here. I heard about it. I got here after the meeting was over. So I am familiar with the situation. But my question would be, if the ordinance was intact, you purchased, how long have you been raising chickens? I'm not anti-chicken, I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've had this, I've lived here for 10 years, and I don't know how long exactly I've had chickens on my property for eggs and ticks and mosquitoes, because they, again, June I was here, they eat 80 ticks per chicken per hour. My daughter plays softball. She's six years old, and her and six other of her teammates got ticks from the softball game, literally one softball game, and then it continued, and that's right here at the school by the park. And that's cut grass, you know, obviously, the ticks have been a huge problem. So, you know, I basically, it's, for me, it's all around a win-win. You know, I have pest control, I have basically free food, I'm giving food to my neighbors who are young or elderly, you know. Again, one of the most nutrient-dense things on the planet, literally. And it's not like I'm selling chickens or selling eggs or anything like that. I mean, you can sell eggs in all 50 states without a license, it's totally illegal, but I just have them for my own, my own, you know. I'm sure there's plenty of people in this township that have gardens in their backyard, and the federal government said two years ago that if you have a garden, you need to tell them and you need to register your garden. I'm sure that no one has done that, so. Uh, less than 10. Yeah. I had 11, but foxes and hawks do exist, especially because I live right near the lake. So, you know, it's a price I'm willing to pay. It's the food chain. It is what it is. There's nothing I can do about it.
Well, Zach, the most important thing is, we, the facts are, there is an ordinance, and we're, everything else is nice and fine about ticks and health and giving away free eggs. The main thing about the ordinance, and again, I never promised anything about amending any type of ordinance for chickens of my own knowledge. And so, so again, the main thing that we're concerned about is there is an active ordinance that is legal that is going to be enforced for now. Okay?
Anybody else want to comment? Thank you. Oh, wait, hold on a second. Can you repeat that?
Just let Zach know, I usually make my calls at night, so I won't repeat them tonight. I don't really need to call back today, but I will recall them tonight.
Okay, did you hear that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak from the public? Do I have a motion to close to the public, please?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next regular, council meeting will be March 26th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. I have a motion for adjournment. Hold on.
Is there a warning?
Go ahead.
I'd like to repeat something that former President Franklin Delano Roosevelt said. "Those who have long enjoyed such privileges as we enjoy, forget in time that many have died to win them."